Okay, we'll call a regular city council meeting February 15th, 2023 to order at 7:00 PM. Could you please stand and join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Allison?
Here.
Tom Baylor?
Here.
Kathy Sherman is absent. Jeff Gard is absent. Melina Meyer?
Here.
Ann Schaefer?
Here.
Kristen Carpenter?
Here.
Ken Jones?
Here.
That's a quorum of council.
Okay, approval of regular agenda. Thank you.
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion, changes? Hearing none, then the agenda will stand approved. Disclosures of conflicts of interest? And export aid communications? Any conflicts?
I think Tom should try to say something.
Oh, yeah, Tom, go ahead.
I'm sorry, there's just FYI, there's a heck of a delay for those of us on the computer here calling in, so keep that in mind when we answer your question.
Roger, sounds good. Okay, thank you, Tom. So disclosures of conflicts of interest and export aid communications? Hearing none, then we'll go to communications by petitions for visitors. We have guest speakers tonight, Kate Morse and Shay Bowman of Copper River Watership Project.
So Logan, are you writing the slides? Okay. All right. Well, hello, I'm Kate Morse. I am program director for the Copper River Watership Project, and you'll hear from Shay, my compadre, here shortly. Appreciate all that you do, serving as city council members, and also the opportunity to share and celebrate our partnership between the Copper River Watership Project and the city of Cordova. First little background on our organization. We're a nonprofit that works to promote a salmon-rich, intact watershed in culturally diverse communities by forming partnerships for watershed scale planning and projects. Half of our board of directors' seats are filled by Cordova residents, and the other half are from the Copper Basin, which represents the diversity of the region as far as how the population is spread across an area roughly the size of West Virginia. There's diverse climates, cultures, and ways of life that can lead to a lot of challenges working north and south of the Two Gatch Mountains. But we work to focus our conversations with partners in the larger health of the watershed, because whether we agree on everything or not, the health of the Copper River salmon depends on healthy intact habitat up and down river. And all of our communities are literally in the midst of salmon habitat, so all of our collective decisions can add up to impacts to the resource. But we're so fortunate that we get to live in the Copper River where we still have a largely intact river. And while we see changes that are outside our direct influence with warming temperatures and changes in our precipitation, we have the opportunity to implement adaptive management practices to help sustain the health of our fisheries into the uncertain future. So Cordova is the only incorporated city in our watershed and a natural partner to help ensure our community prospers without negative impacts to the resources, largely salmon, that sustain us. And we are definitely in the midst of salmon habitat. That's fine, you can go ahead, Logan. So you can see the region there. I forgot about the slides. You can go forward one more. So this was in your packet, but like I was saying, that Cordova being the only city is a natural partner, and we appreciate that we've received support from so many of the city partners' departments, including Public Works, Planning, Parks and Recreation, the Refuge Department, Cordova City Schools, and the Medical Center. As this map indicates, our partnership has had community-wide impacts. More detail on specific projects are provided in your packet about our partner programs, and I'll touch on them tonight. But after tonight, I'm just happy to talk further at any point, address questions and concerns from the community and our partners, which includes the city. So, next slide, Logan. In our effort to help raise awareness for Cordova's connection to salmon and inspire stewardship of our watershed, we partner with Cordova City Schools and the Science Center on a range of salmon education programs, which include maintaining a salmon tank in the school, field trips for local students, and then a summer program that takes kids from up and down river on adventure throughout a watershed, connecting the teens from communities up and down. We're also leading... Oh, sorry, I wasn't ready to go forward yet. We're also the lead partner for planning and implementing Salmon Jam each summer, one of the lead partners, which helps to celebrate salmon, improve the quality of life for Cordovans, and attract visitors to our community to support our local businesses. Both Parks and Recreation and the Refuge have facilitated activities as part of this community event. And when it comes to sustaining and restoring healthy salmon habitat, we have partnered to help raise funds to implement best management practices for stormwater and storm management. Both the rain and melting snow that we have carry all of the sediment and pollutants from our roadways into our local waterways. We partner with Planning and Public Works to identify priority sites and locations for implementing best management practices, and have helped raise the funds necessary to implement them and continue to partner to maintain them. For invasive species, we work with the Parks and Recreation and Public Works Program to manage high-priority invasive species on city land. Invasive species are non-native species that have a potential to impact habitat quality and quantity due to their life history and competitive advantage over local species. We help to monitor and treat local infestations and do outreach to get help identifying infestations, as well as to reduce the likelihood of their spread or introduction of new species. We've also done a significant amount of restoration work, which includes reestablishing vegetation on the edges of salmon habitat. And maybe higher profile, we've helped to replace 11 undersized culverts in the Cordova area alone, three within city limits, and are slated to install two more out the road this summer. These larger culverts allow the movement of fish and material through the system, maximizing available habitat to juvenile and adult salmon. We're also working to coordinate efforts to address the failing IAC Lake Weir and anticipate the new structure to be installed sometime in late 2024. This is a quick summary, but I know that there's a lot more information in your packet and on our website, and we always welcome a call, email, or visit from you anytime. I'm going to turn it over to Shay, who's going to go into a little bit more depth about one of our favorite partnerships with the city, which is the Gilnet Recycling Program.
Hi, thanks for the introduction, Kate. I'm the operations manager at the Copper River Watership Project, and... You can go forward. I facilitate the fishing web recycling program in partnership with the city, which was started in 2009. It was started in partnership with CDFU, the Marine Advisory Program, and the native village of IAC and the Science Center. And probably by the end of this summer, we will hit 300,000 pounds of nets recycled, which is pretty exciting. And then in 2020, we purchased the baler that is shown there. It's currently being housed at the facility on White Shed Road. And we purchased it to help with recycling other materials, including aluminum cans, but it's also used to recycle our web. And we do it because it makes shipping the web in a container much more efficient and also organized. You can go ahead for the next slide. So, starting in 2021, we recycled our first 40-foot container of baled web. And this year, well, 2022, we also filled a container. So if all of that web was unveiled and going into the landfill, it would equal about five 40-foot containers of unveiled web. So it's a pretty huge volume of web that would be going into the landfill if it wasn't getting recycled. Go ahead. The benefits to the city of Cordova. Nets can be pretty hard on landfill equipment. They're made for catching things, and they're very effective at catching equipment. So that can also take up a lot of staff time to deal with. And then in 2016, Rich Rogers, who was the Public Works Director at the time, estimated that it costed 46 cents per pound of material that went into the landfill. Obviously, lots of things have changed since 2016. But one of the things that has changed is... Sorry, nope, mine. One of the things that has changed is that the city's no longer baling trash. But that does mean that they're making a lot more trips out to the landfill. So if all that web was going to the landfill, that would also be significantly more trips to the landfill. So if you calculate how many pounds of web we recycle by how much it's estimated a pound of web costs going into the landfill, that would be a savings of around $130,000. But we also need to take into the account that we don't know the true cost of putting a net into the landfill for future generations of Cordovans. Go ahead. Okay. So the process to recycle nets. Fishermen or netmenders or volunteers will help strip the nets of any non-web material, so that includes your lead line, cork lines, weed lines. And then it needs to be cleaned of dirt and rocks and sticks and dead fish and anything that might make a web gross. It's really important that this gets done well, because it was explained to me by the person who runs Net Your Problem, who we are working with as a partner, that when they're sending web to buyers, it's like they're expecting to get a product that is consistent. And so if they're buying a container full of Gilnet, they want a container full of Gilnet, not everything else. It's like if you went to the store and bought a bag of flour and got half-sugar, it's like, that's not what you paid for. So it's really important that we do a really good job of collecting high-quality net. So once the web is cleaned, it can be dropped off at recycling events, which we will be hosting at the baler facility this year. We plan to host four events, and it's facilitated by myself, the city of Cordova Refuge Department, and then volunteers help with quality control and cleaning up the web as it comes in. I estimate that we probably have 15 to 30 volunteer hours invested during each event, and then we have four of them. So it's a pretty huge investment of volunteer time. Once the web is ready to go, recycle-ready, it gets baled. And then the bales are loaded into shipping containers, which are then shipped to Net Your Problem in Seattle. Net Your Problem is also working with several different Alaska communities throughout the state and throughout the United States. And so they're coordinating, you know, these different shipments of web coming in, and they're working to find the best buyers for those shipments of web. So lots of different products can be made with web. You can see a lot of them here. And then I also have some to pass around. This is 3D printer filament, so you can make anything that you would make with 3D printer filament. I don't really know.
Carpet squares.
Carpet squares.
That's awesome.
These are carpet squares.
These are socks, which are made out of nylon. And then these are the plastic... They're called nurdles that you get when you mechanically recycle plastics. So once you have that virgin material, either a nurdle or a nylon thread, you can make anything that you would make out of normal plastic. So your sunglasses, shoes, anything like that. Go ahead. How is the program funded? Huge support comes from Alaska Marine Lines, because they donate the shipping of the web as an in-kind donation every year. If they weren't willing to do that, I don't think the program would be possible. And then we get a very, very, very small amount of money back from the web that we sell, which we reinvest in the program. The city has also been baling aluminum cans, and then they are shipped with our containers full of web. And that money also gets reinvested in the program. And then we make up the rest of the funding gap with support from our partner organizations, which are also listed on the side there. You can go ahead. So our plans for this coming year, we are looking to expand the program from a fishing web recycling program to a fishing gear recycling program. So Net Your Problem can now accept all the different components of a web. They just need to be separated. They can also accept different types of fishing gear, like crab pots and things of that sort. So we're going to work to expand to accepting some of these other items. And then we are also going to work to convene a working group to help us achieve these goals. And then we will be coordinating outreach to increase aluminum can recycling, so we can help fund the program that way. And thank you all for your time, and yeah, if you have any questions, let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, nice work.
Any questions for the group? Yeah, thank you. Keep up the good work. Okay, so next on our agenda is audience comments regarding agenda items. The mic is open. If anybody would like to make any comments on any agenda item.
Good evening. Kathy Renfeld, Court of the Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to come in and say hello to you all. I haven't been able to come to very many council meetings. My family's schedule doesn't allow much time for me to escape in the evenings, but I was able to get out today. And I wanted to let you know, you'll probably hear about it in the city manager's report, but I was able to meet with Helen and with city council member Sherman about some of the topics that we've discussed in the past, including the best ways for the chamber to support Cordova Center marketing efforts. And so we're still working through some of those details. But I did want to thank city council for the support that you do give the chamber and for the funding that you have approved in the annual budget. And I also wanted to... Helen suggested that I provide some information on how I... About the capital contributions that the chamber requested, how I would prioritize those three projects that I had put forth for consideration. So I did send an email, a little late probably, to the city manager and this D. Clerk, and so if you haven't gotten it yet, you'll probably get it soon, that has some supporting documentations for the Business Empowerment Summit, the Regenerative Tourism Impact Studio, and the Cordova Blue Economy Project. And those are the three projects that we requested $10,000 of capital funding each to support. And that is the order that I would prioritize them in. First, the Business Empowerment Summit. Second, the Regenerative Tourism Impact Studio. And third, the Cordova Blue Economy Project. The reason that we are requesting some capital funds to support these programs this year is because we are, after several years of planning and strategizing, we are launching these programs now. And just as a teacher, when they're teaching a new grade, they have to spend a lot of extra time on the front end, building that curriculum and putting forth the framework. And then after that, second and third, and following years, there's a lot less time and energy involved. That is where we're at with these programs. And I think there's a lot of positive impact that can come with these for the entire community, not just our membership. And I just wanted to share that with you and see if there's any questions. I don't know if this is a time where I take questions. Probably not, just giving comments. So, yeah, and I do hope to also be sending in some written reports for inclusion. And I didn't know if that should go under any certain part of the agenda or if that should just be sent to the clerk to be sent directly to his city council. So I did ask for both Helen and Susan's feedback on that. So we'll work towards that together to make sure that we keep you guys well in the loop.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks.
Any other audience comments on agenda items? Seeing nobody else, we'll move along to chairperson representatives of boards and commissions. I think Dr. Sanders was on for CCMC.
Yes, hi, hello, mayor and council members. Today, I sat in with CCMC employees and ICHC employees to participate in a health services planning meeting. The hospital continues to put a lot of time and effort into helping with the NVE evaluation. We're committed to take whatever time is necessary to ensure that if there is a transfer of hospital operations, it's done right through the appropriate public process and in a way that ensures continued hospital services and improved financial stability. Currently, the hospital continues to operate in the red. We continue to work with state and regional hospital partners to look at our processes and come up with creative solutions to improve our revenue cycle. We have a bunch of improvements that will be impacting our hospital in the next two years. But none of these improvements would be as substantial as not having two competing entities and actually being able to integrate healthcare in Cordova with tribal management. So we are continuing to work hard to see if this is a viable option for Cordova. And I'm glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Dr. Sanders? Online, Councilmember Mayor, Councilmember Meyer? Does that sound like a thing, Susan? Go ahead, Tom.
No, I just want to say I appreciate your work on this, Dr. Sanders. And I spoke with the city manager yesterday and kind of got my questions answered already. So thank you very much.
Okay, we have a school board rep online or here? I don't believe so. Student council report?
I thought they were this time, and I didn't get it. Yeah.
Yeah, I saw your email, but I thought they were, but maybe I'll rattle their keys a little bit. Consent calendar is before you.
Okay, on the consent calendar, Jeff Gard is absent. Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Heather.
Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
Yes.
And Kathy Sherman is absent. The consent calendar is approved.
Okay, thank you. The minutes were in the consent calendar. So consideration of bids, proposals, and contracts, we have item number nine, approval of employment agreement between Cindy and Helen Howard.
I move to approve.
Second.
They moved and seconded to approve. I'd like to start out the conversation a little bit with... We did Helen's evaluation last meeting, and it was one of the best, if not the best, evaluation that I've been a process of in my multiple years here at the city. So we are very pleased with the job Helen is doing and look forward to many more years in the future. There was one item that if we could indulge council, somebody from council, to making an amendment after we printed the packet, it was noticed that other non-union employees that had been here for more than three years accrue leave time at 16 hours per month, and in the contract it says 12. So if we could make an amendment to amend this contract to, say, 16 hours per month, that would be what I'd be looking for, so.
I move to amend. On section nine, the annual leave, cross up the 12, make it 16.
Second.
Okay, we moved and seconded to make that leave the same as other non-union employees. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? If the amendment passes, so then we're at the main motion to approve the new contract with Helen Howard. Any discussion? Hearing none, then does that be a roll call?
It should be. So on the approval after the amendment, Kathy Sherman is absent. Ken Jones?
Yes.
Jeff Gard is absent. Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Heather.
Melina Meyer?
Yeah.
And Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
And motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much, Helen. I look forward to working with you for a few more years, anyway.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Okay. I've lost my agenda. So next on the agenda is council action on change order for Mark Keller, project manager on the South Harbor rebuild project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember.
I move to approve change order 001.
Should we state the amount on that?
For $69,988 for additional time and travel for the South Harbor rebuild project manager.
Okay, so we move and seconded. Councilmember Carpenter?
This is a recommendation, I think, that has come from staff, and we have worked with Mark Keller for at least a year now, I think. And he is our project representative, which gives me way more confidence in our ability to manage this whole project. So I support giving them what they need, and I feel like $70,000 probably is not much when we're thinking about how much it could save us having a really strong project representative or project owner's representative.
Thank you. Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, I just had a question about what was... Is it an addition of duties or just addition of time needed to be, you know, in the project?
So it's... I think it was time on the other end was more than anticipated. Mark Keller has done some amazing jobs, has always been high up in the echelon, and he came to work with us, and we wrote RFPs together. And so that's not a normal workload for him. So to understand what that involved was on the wrong side. So we actually went over on the other side. We did increase the trips by a couple, because there's just certain points that really need to have an experienced time on it. So that's basically the cause for it, because I laughed when I read your comments. Is this for the whole contract?
I saw that there. Okay, cool. Yeah, I was just trying to understand what was different about the scope then. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
No comment.
Councilmember Mayor?
I'm good.
And Councilmember Meyer?
I'm good too, thank you.
Okay, I don't think there's any further discussion. That's a roll call, please.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman is absent. Ken Jones?
Yep.
Tom Baylor?
Heather.
Jeff Gard is absent. Melina Meyer?
Yes.
And Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number 11, council action on change order for Turnegan Marine Construction on the South Harbor Rebuild Project.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve change order, I guess, 001 for 200...
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve, Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I wish, I wish the Harbor Commission could have had one more, one more whack at the drawing before we approved that contract. So this wouldn't be coming back to us as a change order. But I am glad that we were able to catch these things and they were in the initial conceptual design that the Harbor Commission talked about, that they weren't in the, in the contract that was approved. So they're coming back as a change order and I support us making the change order.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, I appreciate that the Harbor, the Harbor Commission for going over the drawings and submitting their revisions and then also turning in for incorporating the edits from the Harbor Commission. So I'm also in support. Appreciate the process.
Thank you. Councilmember Carpenter? Councilmember Meyer?
Sorry, no comment.
Councilmember Bayer?
Sorry, no comment.
Okay, sounds like everybody's ready to vote, so roll call on item 11.
Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman is absent. Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
Jeff Guard is absent. Ken Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, thank you. Reports of officers, the mayor's report. I just have three items. I spent most of the last couple of weeks in, in Montana at San Gorm, dealing with my uncle's passing. So it was good to get back there, but it was pretty busy traveling all over the state of Alaska, or, I mean, Montana. But there's, if it's okay with council, Barb Jewell has asked for a letter of support for CCMC behavioral health grant annual application. They want a letter of support from the city. I guess it's an annual thing that we've been giving them and I assume that it's okay to continue to support their behavioral health grant over there. News Nation is a podcast, I believe, early morning show. This week, they want to do a four-minute interview on Zoom with me for, oh, to talk about, there was an article in the paper that the Zeds giving the 269 million, or whatever it was, for the ferries, modernization of the ferries and electrification of the ferries and such. So they want to do a four-minute event, questions on what do ferries mean to, to our community. So that should be pretty easy to do. And then we'll talk about it, pending agenda, but Emily Pave from Land and Associates, working with the Raspousen Foundation, wants to do a presentation to council on the broadband monies that's, that's out there that the state has, has to decide how to divvy up and the state's broadband group will participate in that. Anyway, they want to come. Part of what the state is requiring them to do as a contractor is work with communities on this. So this is just a part of that, one, one more meeting that they can jock up to, to show their support. So we'll pick a time and let them know and it may be by Zoom or phone or they might be in person depending on what they, how that fits in with their schedule. So that's all I have on my report. Any questions? Okay, Manager Howard?
Thank you. I do have a written report in the packet, but I want to clarify something. Under the CCMC NVE healthcare header, I have met a couple of times now with NVE leadership around the clinic and the tribe's interest in doing a consolidated healthcare campus here in Cordova. And I think I used some words that I would like to improve upon because I think they caused some, some question. I did say in the packet that the conversations resulted in agreement to pursue remodeling of the existing CCMC building, et cetera, et cetera. And what I probably should have said was that we all were in agreement that rather than building a brand-new campus at a considerable cost, it would be in the best interest of the community at this point in time to look at our existing facilities and try to maximize their use by remodeling them and, and sharing whatever resources we could bring to the table. And I also want to say that this is mutual interest, that no governing body has yet agreed to do anything. And this is a investigative, investigative process right now where we're all looking at, what are the options, what are the best choices for our community? And how do we promote the best possible healthcare here? And all three parties are working hard in that direction. So I just wanted to clarify that because I know there was a little bit of confusion around that. And with that, I don't think, Sam, do you have a South Harbor rebuild? Anything, nothing new? Okay, we're, we are playing along as evidenced by the change orders that you approved tonight. There's a lot of work going on behind the scenes, but we are still on schedule to start construction this fall. And this will be something that we all get to look forward to and participate in. And with that, that's the end of my report.
Questions for the manager? Online, Councilmember Bayer?
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember, was it Melina Meyer?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you, Helen, for, for that. I don't see anybody up here chiming down for comment, so. City Clerk's report?
I included the last of the election notices that gets advertised in the packet as well as a sample ballot. And I guess I was just wanting to highlight that early voting has begun so people can come in person here in this room, actually. It started yesterday. So Tuesday through Friday this week, Monday's a holiday, so next week is Tuesday through Friday also. And then the following week is the full week. And then the Monday before the election, you can also come to early vote. And then if you want a ballot by mail, you have to apply for that with me. There's an application on the website. And I can accept that application by email. And you have to do that by February 28th or it won't be, get to you timely enough to vote it timely enough. And we can answer any questions about that at City Hall. You can call me or Tina or really the front desk probably can answer a lot of questions too. And that was all I had to report. We're just continuing to get ready for the election.
Okay, any questions, clerk? Okay, hearing none, then we'll move on to staff quarter reports. Museum and Cordova Center and the CDFD. Comments, questions?
Yeah, comments, Cordova Center?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, well, thanks for providing those numbers. There's certainly some more information I'd like to get on there and then what our costs are. But perhaps I can give those at a later time or talk with city manager. But thank you for at least having this on there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we had one correspondence, a letter from OSA, or OSA, or either Cordova 2023 population determination. Slaggy from last year? They're about the same.
Oh, yeah, it is. It's up a little bit. I went and renewed my membership to, I think it was Alaska Association of Municipal Clerks and the cutoff was 2,500, so I had to pay 70 bucks instead of 50. But that's okay. It's been growing a little bit.
Yeah.
It's definitely been up a little bit each year.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, moving on to ordinances, resolutions. Ordinance 1204. An ordinance of the Council of City of Cordova, Alaska repealing Cordova municipal code, chapter 19.04 flood protection and enacting chapter 19.04 flood plain management to adopt National Flood Insurance Act land use criteria set forth in federal regulations as requirements for national flood insurance program eligibility and demanding CMC 1.28.05 to update the funding schedule to reflect changes to chapter 19.04. First reading.
Mr. Mayor, so moved?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, Councilmember Jones?
Just made a motion so we can discuss it.
Councilmember Schaefer?
I mean, I would support if, you know, it's to keep us in line so that we're, if we experience a sort of a, we can be eligible with knowing good standing FEMA so we can receive funds as necessary, so.
Maybe we can get a staff report? See the staffs?
Yes.
I don't have anything additional unless you have specific questions.
Questions, Councilmember Carpenter?
I was just curious about the, they talk about the 1% flood and I just wondered, I mean, we're getting more precipitation as rain and I assume they're using updated models. I don't know if you know anything about how they calculate that or how it's calculated for our area?
Uh, no, I don't know the specifics on how they model that.
Yeah, just a sec. Hope they're, hope they're updating their models.
The most current maps are from 2015, so that was the last time they modeled for this area.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Bayer?
I'm good, thank you for your information.
Councilmember Meyer?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, this is first reading, so this will be back for public hearing and second reading at the next meeting, so.
Correct.
Voice vote on the ordinance 1204, first reading. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Close? Hearing this.
Good job, Kathy.
Okay, resolution 022303. A resolution of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska designated capital improvement projects.
Mr. Mayor, so moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I just moved so we can get it on the floor. There's actually a couple of things that I thought maybe got lost in translation. We had a pretty hefty change order for staff to put together here. I know at the last meeting we discussed having ski hill improvements on there and I just didn't see it. Maybe I'm missing it. So I'd like to, I guess, make a motion to amend to add under recreational safety and development, ski hill improvements.
You talking about the radio tower or something?
No, we discussed that, that's under the 911 or the public safety section. But I was, at the last meeting, I asked for ski hill improvements to be put on there and that was more of a general, I guess, general resort improvements.
Right, you were talking about the.
Tower maintenance and snowmakers and an ice skating area potentially, you know. There's things, I don't know exactly what the ski club wants for improvements. I just know that there is a capital need up there. And I had been approached by one member of the ski club asking about tower repainting work, you know, so we don't lose the lift, the weatherization. So I just wanted to have a line item on there for ski hill improvements.
Okay, so they have under recreation and development underneath at the bottom of that right above land development?
Yeah.
Ski hill improvements. It's been motion to amend, so a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to add ski hill improvements to the bottom of the recreation, safety and development. Any further discussion on the amendment? Yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Bayer?
Yeah, I'm not going to support this. I think at the last meeting, I made a comment that I would hope that staff would bring forward everything, all their needs and wants. We're not getting anything from the ski hill club. We don't have anything from the parks director. One member paying something to a councilperson that doesn't quite qualify as a great need or want. And we're not having any kind of discussion on this, we're just kind of putting it down there. So much like we make comments when we'd like CDFU to comment on actions that affect the fisheries, if I'm going to support that, I would like to hear from the ski club and what exactly are their needs and wants. So I, so for that reason, I don't think I would support that. And I certainly support the ski club or ski hill, but again, if the ski club really wanted this, they would have had this in front of us probably months ago, you know, wanting it, wanting it on the list. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Meyer?
Yeah, I, I support my ski hill improvement on there, I think. You know, I've, I've heard very few people about the ski hill and I think that it's a great asset to the community and I think that especially with the ski hill because I know that we got asked for some money for it, but in prison.
Okay, thank you.
The cable, but kind of open up that dialogue between the ski hill and the city. I think it'd be good, it's a city asset that is kind of run by the ski hill club. So sometimes I think there's a little disconnect between us and them, but it's a great asset to the community. I think that even for that is quite old, so staying on top of that, I think, would be, be good. And if there's some funds to put the money into the ski hill, I think that would be great.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the table? Councilmember Jones?
So during the comprehensive planning, ski hill came up as a community priority and it is a community asset that we own. The ski club manages the day-to-day operations and kind of takes care of it for us, but it is a piece of city infrastructure. Currently doesn't fall under Parks and Rec oversight, so that's why you didn't hear from the Parks and Rec director on this item. The ski club, they did mention at least the tower painting during, when we were talking about having the cable. And I guess the Mr. Baylor's comment about how we should have heard from him, I agree, we probably should have heard from him, but, you know, we didn't hear about the cable replacement until it was already in town and they had the contractor on his way. So there is a disconnect there and I think that having this on the CIP list and also having staff work on developing a better dialogue between the ski club and the city and what the city's priorities are for the ski hill would be a really good thing. And that place needs some love and I just want to see it added on to the capital improvement list for that reason. So, thanks.
Anything further on the amendment? You all those in favor of the amendment, say aye?
Aye.
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 Close?
Aye.
You have passes still, yeah?
Four one, yes, that's approved.
Okay, so back to the main motion. The listing full.
I'd like to make a amendment.
Yes, go ahead.
This is super picky, but where it says public works, water source streets, should that, did that, well, should that just be, we have a header for sewer and streets, should that just be water? So like water upgrades, sewer upgrades, streets instead of public works, water service. Those are all water ones.
Because the other two have their own categories.
Public works, water source streets and just.
Yep.
Just call that water.
Or water upgrades or water service upgrades.
should that just be, we have a header for sewer and streets, should that just be water? So like water upgrades, sewer upgrades, streets, instead of public works water service. Those are all water ones.
Because the other two have their own categories.
Public works water source streets and just, um,
Just call that water.
substitute it for water upgrades or water service upgrades or, yeah.
Second amendment?
Can that just be clerical? Helen, you understand?
Yeah.
You agree, right?
Okay, we'll call that a clerical. Fix that.
Okay.
Okay, so that has changed.
If we're talking super picky?
Uh-oh.
Go ahead, another clerical.
Under the, um,
Oh, it's fine.
The section under Portland Harbor where it says improve pedestrian safety by creating a sidewalk and boardwalk system to navigate between the north and south harbors. Um, I was wondering if it could, because I thought, well, I don't know that we're having a boardwalk system between the two of them, but by creating a sidewalk system to navigate between the north and south harbors and boardwalk within each harbor section, does that make sense?
So I actually think that the way it's written right now as captures the, um, the proposed PIDP that staff's working on pretty well, and I'd like to keep it the same.
Uh, that's what I was going to say. The current concept has a boardwalk as part of the connection to the south harbor, so it's not a sidewalk all the way around. It's a combo system to get you from one side to the other.
Great, okay. I guess I need to look who drawing, please.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Appreciate the work staff put into this list. It's quite a bit different than the previous version of the study. Last chance.
Um, yeah, I, I guess if we're in really picky, I'd like to change the waste oil building to waste oil slash maintenance building. I don't remember if I can do any. That was, the conceptual was that it would be a combination building so that the harbor staff could have equipment and have a maintenance area inside of a waste oil building, so.
Probably get more money for waste oil than for maintenance.
Maybe. Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know. If you guys are calling it clerical, you all got to agree to it, I guess, unless you're amending it to say that.
I think that's the way we've always been told. Um, every time Tony comes and talks about it, he says, it's maintenance.
Waste oil and maintenance? Is everybody, the council's good?
I suppose that's, that's good.
Sure, I, I'm not.
If there's money for maintenance but not waste oil, then they get it. If there's money for waste oil but not maintenance, they can get it for that, too. Tony will give, whatever you.
I will change to waste oil and or slash maintenance?
Yeah.
It's not like I wrote this. I just, but I'm willing to edit it.
Somebody's spending some time at the state website filling it in, huh?
Uh, yeah, not me.
Okay, anything else? Anything from staff? Helen, you're good? Okay, let's do a roll call then on this, if you could.
Sure. So it was amended once?
Yeah, just amended once.
Yes, and then we have two little clerical things that will be changed. On resolution two-twenty-three-oh-three has amended once and a few clerical mistakes being changed. Tom Bayer?
Helen.
Jeff Gard is absent. Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
And Kathy Sherman is absent. Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you. Resolution oh-two-twenty-three-oh-five. A resolution of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, supporting native village of EAC's efforts to improve healthcare in Cordova through upgrades to existing healthcare infrastructure while working to consolidate Cordova Community Medical Center and native village of EAC healthcare services for the benefit of all Cordova and supporting funding requests to improve Cordova healthcare infrastructure and result in the consolidation of health service delivery.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to the second. Councilmember Schaefer?
Um, no, I, um, I'm in support of this. I really appreciated how the resolution was laid out and all the different wherethas information that was provided, so.
Councilmember Carpenter?
Uh, I don't have any comments. Ann?
Councilmember Jones, anything? Councilmember Meyer?
I guess I will make one comment. I, I just wanted to thank the city manager for having the dialogue with NVE and I think getting to the point of saying that, yes, we can at least try to modify the building we have instead of going with new construction seems like a much better starting place to me. So I appreciate that we're, that we're focusing on that and going in that direction. Thank you.
Councilmember Meyer, did you have any comments regarding this?
Um, I, I support this. I think it's a good direction, um, to go down. Um, I support it.
Thank you. Councilmember Bayer?
I support it, but again, my concerns were answered with the discussion with the city manager. I appreciate the work that Dr. Sanders put into this.
Okay, so all those in favor of resolution oh-two-twenty-three-oh-five, say aye.
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 And opposed? Motion carries. Resolution oh-two-twenty-three-oh-six. A resolution of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, adopting a capital budget for fiscal year 2023 and appropriating the amount of one million four hundred forty-two thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars as summarized pursuant to the following table.
So moved?
Second.
Moved to the second. Councilmember Jones?
Um, I moved so we can get it on the floor for discussion.
Any discussion? Councilmember Schaefer?
I just have to look back at my questions that I asked before, which I didn't have other follow-up questions. Um, no, I appreciate the priorities that were put together from staff. Um, and so, yeah, I guess my main concern was having the capacity to do it all, but Helen hopefully pointed out that a lot of this is acquiring items that we, you know, needed, so, that's more.
Anybody else? Councilmember Carpenter?
I, my one question was the EAC drive culvert replacement?
Of course, I asked about culverts. Where is EAC drive? I was just curious. I don't.
So it's the culvert, sorry. So it's the culvert right as you turn off onto Six Mile, the last road?
Oh.
There's that creek right there that, you know, had a beaver this year. Um, yeah, but that, which is why we actually found out that culvert, they took a picture from the inside, and it's like in the middle, it's going like this.
Just collapsed.
Yeah, so it is an adremus, and it'll have to be dealt with on that level, but it's passable now, so we don't have to do a lot of digging down this.
Thanks.
Councilmember Bayer?
Uh, no comment.
Councilmember Meyer?
Not to make a.
Okay, well, I'm going to take liberties of the chair to make a couple of comments here. Um, not that I get a vote on it, but, um, it would be much easier to make these decisions for, for everybody if we had some good current financials in front of us. I've, I believe, um, the ARPA funds, it seems like every project that comes up here, we're spending ARPA funds on it. And I'm not sure where we're at on the total of that, and, and we aren't getting current financials on, on what our balances are in our account. I would remind council that you spent four million dollars from somewhere on the harbor project. You committed that, and we are hoping to get money from some other organization for that. But, um, four million dollars out of your general fund. Um, and then now another one and a half million, five and a half million. I'm not sure what the total is in that account, but, um, I'm pretty sure that a lot of it is allocated to things like the Harbor Enterprise Fund and, um, Sewer Water Enterprise Fund thing, so, um, it, it appears that council is, is ready to pass one and a half million dollars without, without much discussion of it in the end, but, um, just like to remind you that at some point in time, we need financial reports, we need current financial reports, and we need to know what our balances are in these accounts because, because, uh, I know we did get someone that falls last year with the, with the state money, but, uh, I'm just not that confident that all that money is, is out there. And, and maybe it is, I just haven't, uh, I just can't lay my fingers on it in any report. Uh, so I, I hope that, sincerely hope that it is. Uh, my other comment, I guess, on this is that, um, if we're serious about building a new public safety building, um, you know, are we sure we want to put three hundred thousand dollars into, into it? I'm not sure how bad that roof is on that, but, um, anyway, it seems like we're throwing, throwing money at something that we've, we're planning on tearing down pretty soon. Um, so, anyway, those are just my, my thoughts. I just want to remind council that, that we, we have committed to four million dollars already, and now we're going to be at five and a half million. And, and I think that is probably the extent of your general fund. Anything more is going to come out of permanent fund, and, and we are continually spending that harbor depreciation money, uh, as we've spent some of that tonight on the, the change orders. Um, and that money is sitting somewhere, and I have a feeling that that's part of the general fund monies. So, anyway, um, I know we're getting there, and we'll get there, um, with the financial reports, but, uh, sure would be nice before we made big million and a half dollar decisions to, to do that. Councilmember Carpenter?
Uh, I just wanted to know for people who might be listening along the following, well, we still have the one point three billion from the school bond reimbursement remaining that is not propagated or allocated anywhere, is my understanding? And then, um, I guess about the public safety building, yes, I kind of had the same thought, but I don't, I mean, we don't even have, we, that, that's going to be at least five years, if not seven or eight or nine, before we get anything going with that, and so a few hundred thousand to make the building we have stretch a little bit longer, I don't think it's going to, I, I think we're going to need it, so.
I just, we haven't seen the condition reports that are supposedly out there somewhere. Uh, council has not seen those reports, so we don't know, um, maybe any of those reports on, on what it, what it may or may not take. So we're, we're making, we're getting a car a little bit. Kenny won't push with the horses, um, in my opinion, but again, I don't get to make the choice anymore. Go ahead.
So if I may, I just want to clarify a couple of things. Um, normally we pass the capital budget, not always, in December with the annual operating budget, and we postpone, um, to spring, and we're doing it now. Um, this is just to identify, staff identified, departments identified the priorities that they felt they needed to address this calendar year, so in fiscal year twenty-three. Items that they felt that without them, it would be difficult to do their jobs or that, um, were in need of immediate, um, maybe not replacement, but there's, there's some peril involved in not, not updating. And I would include within that, um, recent, um, something that hit my guest this week, which was that our accounting, um, I mean, our, um, where is it on here? I'm not seeing it. Somewhere here. We just, we just heard that, um, our, our, all of our, um, computer modems and, um, storage, um, the service on those, since they were installed in 2016, are no longer going to be available to us. Um, we will not have Microsoft updates. We won't have service on those things, so we're going to have to replace a lot of equipment and things like that. So those sorts of things come up, and they are included in this, um, our accounting software. And this gets back to the mayor's comments. And we're really struggling to get updated financial information available, not only to me as a manager, but also to you as council so that you can make decisions. Um, and we've made the decision that right now that the software is really what the holdup is, and are identifying solutions that will hopefully alleviate this problem in the future. We'll see. Um, most everything else on the list are things that have been identified that are, um, essential. We've got the police force. Actually, each of the departments are here, and each of them can identify why they put, these are the priorities that they have identified for their department and put on this list. So if there's any specific questions, any of the department heads are here to answer those questions. But I think that this list represents many years of, um, kind of scarcity, if you will. We've been punting a lot of needed, um, things down the line because we didn't have the money for them. Um, and so this will give us an opportunity to not cover and in any way address all the capital needs of city or the departments, but it, it goes a long way towards getting us started. The second thing I want to let you know is that in addition to this FY twenty-three capital budget, which is before you tonight, and the CIP list, which you just approved, we're going to have a comprehensive work session to bring forward to you all what the deficiencies are in all of our city assets, those that have been identified and assessed by, through a contract that we issued. So all of that information will come forward to you. We will, um, strategize a five-year plan so that we can start really looking proactively at what our needs are going to be in the future and how we're going to maintain our infrastructure and support staff. So that work session, we're going to schedule for early April, so that's when we'll be looking at that. So hopefully we'll be able to get this to a place where, um, everyone understands what our needs are going to be going into the future, so we can plan for them and budget for them.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead. Councilmember Bayer?
Yeah, well, I take the heart of your comments on our finances, that if, if we need these things, the community's going to support it, then we're going to have to provide it. But what we're not talking about is how we're going to pay for it, and it's going to have to be paid for with more taxes. Uh, the comment of the, the school bond, the money sitting out there, you know, we took money out of our fund to pay that school bond the year that the state reneged on that. So it's not like this all of a sudden, we got this extra bucket of money sitting out there. And that's why, I believe, when you were on, still on council, and a couple of others, we wanted to put that money back into the fund, uh, so it didn't just get spent on different things. Uh, the idea was to reimburse the fund, the money that we pulled out to pay the school bond. So, yeah, I, I just don't agree with when you kind of throw that out there like, oh, well, we still have a million plus over here in the school bond we can spend. Um, that money did come out of our account. Well, thank you.
I have more faith than not that Helen will find money magically.
I, I hope so. I, I, I'm glad you have faith. I'm not so sure I do, but I'm looking on the rocks.
We're, we're giving you the opportunity anyway, it sounds like, so. Any other comments on, on this, um, capital budget?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, when are we going to get the report on all the city facilities and maintenance needs on them?
Um, early April, we'll have a work session.
I guess I do take it hard that we haven't seen that report yet and we are allocating quite a bit of funds for this at this time. Personally, I would feel a little more comfortable if we did wait until we saw that report, so we could see other things that we want to put on there and just maybe put some of the other thing, past the other capital improvement projects and put some of the larger ones on there to wait. But I don't know. You know, the last few years, we have been putting off a lot of this stuff, so this list has been, is greatly needed because we have been neglecting some of these items for as long as I've been on council. So yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Would it be a fair statement to say that staff has reviewed enough of that report to know that these items are still high priority?
Yes, I think what I would like to articulate is that the list before you are, with a few exceptions, are the smaller purchases. Most of the facility assessment that's been done are going to fall into the major category. Not only does the pool liner need to be replaced, but many of the support infrastructure inside the building needs to be replaced and updated. We have that with most of our buildings. The sewer and water systems are, you know, from the 70s and 80s, need to be updated. So a lot of the things that you're going to see are going to be those really large capital investments that will need to prioritize and I hate to say that 1.4 million dollars isn't a lot of money, but when we're talking about infrastructure, it isn't. So we're going to need much more investment. We're going to need a lot more federal and state dollars to help support those things. These are the things that will get us through this year and into next year and hopefully years ahead, that will give our staff the equipment and basis to move forward with the work that the city expects them to do and to maintain some of our buildings, at least kind of Band-Aid them, so we can do more permanent fixes.
Any final comments on this? It's a budget item, so better do a roll call yet.
Yeah. So, Resolution 22306. Kathy Sherman is absent. Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
Jeff Gard is absent. Melina Meyer?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
And Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion, Karras, 52.
Okay, thank you. No unfinished business, no miscellaneous business. We have our planning agenda and I have the, two things, I guess, the clerk's evaluation. I will get those documents out to you Friday and I'll give you a week to turn them back in to me and then we'll put that on next agenda to do the clerk's evaluation, so that we get it done before, before the changeover of council happened. And then we need to pick a date for the Rasmussen Foundation and the state to go over their broadband initiative with us. I would imagine it could just be done at the beginning of, as a guest speaker, at the beginning of one of the next couple of meetings.
March 1st, March 15th.
They want to be done with their evaluation of communities by summer. So they wanted to do it in a couple of months anyway, but.
We can probably coordinate that with.
Yeah, you want to send the email to me or who you've been talking to or you did to Helen?
Yeah, I sent it to Helen, but I can send it to you.
Okay, that's fine. We'll talk to them.
Okay, that's all I had, I think. What do you have for?
I was just going to say that I reorganized these a little just by date. So if on that top A list there, if you feel like any of that can go away, I don't mean for you to have to look at it all right this second, but think about it for next time and we can maybe knock some of those off there. I mean, I almost think some of that was the previous manager's stuff. So anyway, you can think about that.
I'll look at that in detail this time.
Okay.
What did we have for workshops in? Our next meeting is March 1st, yes?
Yes, and I think we won't have, I'm guessing, Duncan, well, we have the price cost estimates. Kaufman Engineers has got the condition assessment done, but they're waiting some data.
So we've seen two drafts of all the condition assessments. The holdup is from the cost estimator, which is currently a five-week delay. So we are pushing them as hard as we can to get previous numbers, which is going to go to another spin of the washing machine. But yeah, I hope to have initial initial cost estimates this week, promise me in blood that he'll get them to me.
So that is the determinant of when we would have the work session, because I think once we have that and then we have all of the departments' capital, longer-term capital needs, we're going to lay it all out on the table for you guys to consume and hopefully digest comfortably.
Okay, do you have anything else on the planning agenda for between?
I'm just going to offer under B, Resolutions Ordinances, other items that have been referred to staff number six. Can that one, since we're?
Yes, I can definitely get rid of some of those. I mean, not the E9 number 111, because I think we actually should hang on to that.
No, but just not given that we're now talking today about consolidating.
Yes, because even that sale committee one, it got changed and we changed code after this was referred. Does everybody remember or does anybody remember? I agree that that can go, six. It's never going to come back because code has since been changed. Okay? Shit, nod your heads at me.
Yes.
Okay, I'm taking it off.
I can cope with this list with you.
Okay.
There's one other thing, a work session that we're planning and Kevin, here, here, our housing work session, we hope to have that.
In April. I put that one on here.
It's number seven.
Number seven. The facilities one, I left without any date because we weren't sure about the return on that, but I put it on the top under 13.
Is there any way we could have that in March, not April?
The housing?
The second March meeting, maybe.
And Kevin, how are we looking? What we're doing, just so you know, we're not stalling. We're gathering a lot of information. We've got examples of what other communities are doing, what the state allows, what doesn't allow municipalities to do for incentives. We're trying to gather as much information as possible to present to you, so that you know in what directions you might be able to go to help get housing going here.
I would just say with current staff workflows, we would have a very under-informed conversation if we weren't holding it in March.
Do you think end of April or beginning of, I mean, what's?
I mean, we have it scheduled for April 23rd, so that's what I have built into my schedule to have as much as to you as possible by then. So I mean, if you'd like to have it sooner, we, like I said, I just don't plan on, I would not plan on having as thorough a discussion as we would at the April 23rd.
Yeah, I guess I've just been asking for this for over a year. April 23rd is right in the beginning of the blockout opener. I'm going to be out of town, so I can call in, but I'm not going to be as effective on the phone. I hate being on the phone, so.
Yeah, I can, I can push for the first April meeting and I'll see what I have put together by then, so. But, you know, some of this stuff, we're waiting on other outside sources to get more info and so, yeah.
We can probably be realistic, lay a framework for discussion, understand we're not going to solve all the problems at this one meeting. But what we're trying to identify are a lot of ways that we as a city can incentivize and encourage and assist in making sure that housing gets developed here. And there's ways we can do it and there's ways we can legally, and we're getting information around that. And there's examples of other communities and what they're doing and not doing and then all of the stuff that Kevin is putting together around what our current code does or doesn't do. So there's quite a bit of work and again, it's to help inform what next steps this body might take. But if there's other information you want to do or other discussions you want to have beforehand, we can maybe do another work session and then bubble up. I don't know what would be most helpful.
The April meetings are the 5th and the 19th.
Also, the PID application is due April 28th, so just saying that that's taking up a large, you know, amount of time, so.
One of the May meetings, Susan.
3rd and 17th.
The 17th is a Wednesday, so.
The May meeting would certainly work better for me. This is Councilman Baylor.
Yeah, the May 17th would work better for me if it's before the meeting, then I just run out of the meeting.
We don't have to have a work session on the day of a regular meeting, do we?
No.
We can schedule it at another time, if that would be more convenient to the body.
Okay, well, now that we're getting into May, I guess we can not set the date right today if we're talking about May.
People maybe could communicate back to Susan when, what's your availability like? I know it's right before first open.
That never works though, when they report back to me. It is better to discuss it, but we're, you know, two months out now, so if we're talking about.
And again, April, the same, we might, I'm not sure exactly what dates, but I mean, obviously, we could, we could schedule, schedule it in at any time, but.
But it sounds like that grant for you at the end of April is going to be the worst reason for you to.
Yeah.
Also, April 23rd is a Sunday.
Yeah, why were you thinking that?
Well, that's what I'm packing.
Oh, April of '23.
There's no apostrophe in it.
Ah, you're right. That's clerical edit, I'll make.
Yeah, well, end of May is better for me, for sure, because then I get out of Long Island, Phil Island is just Mondays and Thursdays, so when I'm in town.
Okay, well, that will give us a bit more time too, so I think all around, that sounds better.
Okay.
End of May.
Anything else we need to discuss at the next meeting? March 1st.
Mr. Mayor, there was a, the number three under item B, I would like to see that brought back up. It's too late for this election, though, so it's been on there for a while. Changing to undesignated seats for council, you know, I think this, we have two seats that are running unposed, so I would like to see us make this change and maybe get more people put in for serving on council, so they didn't have to run against their neighbor.
Okay, we'll get that on the agenda.
Do we have a date for when we're going to discuss the refuse in Bear and Bears in Town? You brought, that got brought up at the last, I didn't know if we had a date for it.
You said that you'd get a report from refuse, so I just put it up on the top. I meant to remind you.
So tell me again the meetings in?
I meant to remind you both, I'm sorry.
Tell me, can you tell me again the meetings in April?
The 5th and the 19th.
I think we can, yeah, 5th, if you're looking for a report, maybe a little pictures and maybe we could get Charlotte in at the same time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe the 5th would be kind of good with the spring and everything. And then, yeah, we're working on some stuff right now, get some changes to happen with refuse.
Yeah, earlier is better. Hi, that's good.
Yeah, I think, but not too early if we're going to have Charlotte.
Bears even went to sleep this year, I'm not sure.
She'll have to tell us. She's the biologist.
She may, she had a radio tag, yeah. So yeah.
April 5th.
We'll commit to the 5th.
Okay.
Okay, anything else we need to put on next agenda?
No, but that was good. We got rid of a few of those.
Me or Susan or Helen know and we'll get it on there. Okay. Audience participation. Anything, anybody want to tell us?
All right, I know it's late, so Casey Kinsman, 211 Council Avenue. First, I have a couple of points here. First, I wanted to just publicly thank Police Chief Goss and his staff for their efforts and kind of their February 2nd raid on White Shed Road. As a father and a member of this community, you know, whatever we can do to, you know, rid ourselves of some dangerous and illicit drugs and illegal weapons and maybe some bad players in our community, I think just, just the actions there are commendable. So publicly, I just wanted to get that out there. Secondly, as you're probably aware, I submitted my name for candidacy for City Council, seat C. And with that, I just kind of wanted to highlight my experience with going through the city code for clarification on qualification, eligibility, conflicts of interest. I felt there was maybe some information lacking in the city code. My point number one is I couldn't find any information in regards to conflicts of interest related to council members and like in their relation to city employees. I know it's been stated here, I think in the last council, that generally, it's not permissible for a council member or their spouse or vice versa to be employed, but I couldn't find that in the code. And again, it could be there, please correct me if I'm wrong. Point number two is, other than the initial residential requirement of living in Cordova for 12 months, I couldn't find anything in the code that outlined any residential requirements for a candidate once they were elected. And to me, this was surprising. I feel there should definitely be an established residential requirement for elected council members and that should be published within the city code. And point number three goes along those same lines of I couldn't find any in-person attendance requirements for city council meetings. This was also surprising to me. I know we're a fishing community, I know we're kind of transient at times, which I think telecommunication is a tool, but it shouldn't be our primary tool when, I mean, you are governing our city. So I feel that there should be an established minimum in-person attendance requirement. And again, I don't feel this is an outrageous expectation for officials governing our community. Again, I'd hope that in future meetings, these points could be addressed and this could just help to provide a consistent standard for the individuals who are governing our community. With that, if I have, anything I've stated, any of my observations I've stated are incorrect or inaccurate, I'd welcome any corrected information. With that, mayor, council members, staff, thank you for all you do in serving our community.
Thank you for putting your name in. Anybody else, bodies comments, any agenda or no? Okay, move along then to the council comments. Councilmember Meyer, online.
Yeah, thank you. This was a good meeting and there was a lot of information there and hopefully we can get some of these capital improvement projects done that we've been really hurting the last few years and even before COVID about the school bond reimbursement. So it's nice to get some funds and be able to take care of some of these projects that have been really neglected. So thanks, staff and everybody for putting this meeting together. It was really productive. Thanks.
Councilwoman Baylor?
Yeah, I guess I did for those comments and then just further comments on this key hill. I know one of its members is very well-qualified. I don't think there's a disconnect between key hill and the city. I mean, this person served on the Finance Zoning Commission, multiple terms as a city councilman, ran for mayor, so they're very well aware of how to get something on the city agenda and get their wants and needs out. So I think that's just a good point to make and thanks to staff and thanks for everybody.
And thanks to staff and thanks to everybody for being here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Schaefer?
Yeah, big thank you to staff. I mean, a lot of work goes into every agenda, but I feel like there's a lot of work that's in this particular package, so thank you, everyone. And also thank you to everyone who stepped up to serve my council, school board and the CCMC board. Thank you for running. And I just wanted to say that I'm really excited that Helen has signed on for a couple of years. So thank you.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Chief Goss. That's pretty awesome. Thank you for those efforts. It's good to see that type of stuff happening and these problems getting taken care of. Couple of other general comments is, you know, I'd agree that, like, we heard from the public that we should evaluate in-person meeting requirements and some residency requirements for serving on council. I would agree with that. Another general comment, you know, we passed the 1.4. I would have definitely liked to see some more financial documentation. So I would like to see us hiring a finance director soon that can get us those types of things when we make these big decisions. And like you mentioned, somebody mentioned around this table, spending $300,000 on a building that was slated for getting torn down when we replaced it. I personally would hate to see us tear that building down. I'd like to see us put it up for sale like we did the old library building. Look how that thing got turned around and is a great asset to the community now. Houses a lot of different businesses and nonprofits and, you know, it could be another opportunity for the city to foster some business in this community to, you know, when we do build our new public safety building, instead of tearing that one down for just parking cars and cars take up enough space in our, in our society already. So I think that, that building could be repurposed by a private enterprise. And I'd like to see us go that route. But I think maintaining it in the short term is a good, good use of money. And, and, you know, another general comment, there's a couple of cars in that budget. I was out in the dump the other day taking pictures of eagles and there was like four city cars sitting there crushed and it was kind of like a bummer to oversee, so. I know there's, you know, things break down and then nobody buys them at auction or whatever, but I'd like to see our staff continue to maintain these new vehicles and keep them in good condition so they can serve our community for a little bit longer than some of the ones we've bought in the past. So, thanks.
Kristen Harbinder?
Thanks, yeah, I too am pleased that the manager has signed on for longer service and however many more years we're fortunate have been up to have her. And capital improvements budget, I think we have a lot of deferred maintenance and a lot of deferred expenses. And I know it feels like spending a huge chunk of money, but I also feel like we ask our staff to make do with so little all the time that it feels, I feel like if they say that these are the priorities, I don't want to tell them, well, we disagree, so I want to support staff. And I also wanted to, just, I'm excited to hear that the copper river watershed project is going to be working on aluminum can recycling. I think there's a lot of low-hanging fruit there. We don't even try to recycle cans and we get quite a few bales. And I wish we could make a requirement that anybody with a liquor license needs to collect cans. I don't know if we can, we probably can't do that, but the bars, the school sports games and the school, it seems like the really obvious low-hanging fruit place to start. So if there's anything the city can do to help with that, I would support it. And also as regard to the housing needs assessment, we, the Economic Development District is working with the Minnesota Housing Partnership. We're about to issue an RFP for a housing needs assessment for the region, but it includes collecting information on specific communities. So we might have some of that preliminary information by May to be able to share with the group. I think we're expecting, we would hope to get a final report by the end of May or sometime in June. So I think we could have some of that information to help with that discussion. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, having come to the end of our.